Honorable Dussebe Perez present, Honorable Salvador M. Del Castillo present, Honorable Anthony B. Beltran present, Honorable Maria Corazon Penyaflor, M. Penyaflor present, Honorable Mary Kylie Francine B. Tripolka absent. Madam Chair, there is a quorum.
Good morning, next item.
Prayer.
Dear name the Father of the Sam, the Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, as we deliberate in today's session, give us a wisdom to overcome passion. Give us that understanding heart to do away with prejudice. Give us a foresight to know what the future may devise. Give us the courage and strength to seek the truth and what is good. Give us a passilitate of language that we may be understood. And finally, our Lord, make us worthy public servants of this city. With it we love and highly honor, Naga City, the heart of Beakol. Amen. Dear name the Father of the Sam, the Holy Spirit, amen.
Pambansang Aung.
Again, good morning, next item.
Privilege time.
Anybody who would like to avail of the privilege time? Councilor Maria Corazon Penyaflor, you are acknowledged.
To Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Nina D. Assis, to my esteemed colleagues in this August chamber, friends from the media, to the Sangguneang Panglunsod staff, friends, good morning. Legi ngang mga barangay headed by your story, conducted a one and a half day training seminar on barangay risk reduction management last September two and three twenty twenty-two at Pakori Sports Complex. This was participated in by barangay officials and selected barangay volunteers workers from the twenty-seven barangays of this city who serves to be our first responders in our respective barangays. One of the most important tasks as barangay officials and workers is effectively and efficiently response on to emergencies and calamities. So continued trainings and seminars like this are needed. The half and the one and a half day training with with four hundred five attendees and more, I can say was really successful and educational through the help of the very accommodating and generous persons who shared their time, efforts, and expertise. I would like to thank Mr. Francisco Mendusa, our City Budget Officer, Mr. Ernesto Ilcanvil, our City Armored Head, City Councilor, Joselito de Rosario, Police Lieutenant Colonel Eroda Cachaterina Junior of the Naga City Police Office, and Ms. Michelle Ann Benoobra, Panisares of DILG for being our resource speakers. We are so grateful for sharing your time, topics from the budget summarization, BDRM planning, peace and order, training on basic life support, B-PATs, and DILG guidelines on risk reduction management were thoroughly discussed. I would like to thank our City Mayor Nina Sondigason and Vice Mayor Nina D. Assis and the Sangguneang Panglunsod members for always supporting Legi ngang mga barangay in all these programs and initiatives. Despite of our shortcomings on few things which I apologize in general, the activity has been successful and will make sure to do better next time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Penyaflor. Anybody else who would like to avail of the privilege time? Acknowledge the presence of the Honorable Jill Rosales. Anybody else? Councilor Lito Del Rosario.
Amreyna Agapu sagabos, happy festapo. Madam Chair, members of the fourteen Sangguneang Panglunsod, members of the media headed by Mr. San Ramon, the President. Ladies and gentlemen, the rise in the cost of electricity as observed in the recent months has been a growing concern of consumers in the city. Inside the confines of City Hall, the problem is being largely felt with the notably huge electrical consumption of the different city government offices. Earlier in the year, the city administration had already issued austerity measures to save on energy costs as the city currently faces budget constraints due to enormous expenditures in the past years as brought about by the COVID nineteen pandemic. This coupled with a sharp upswing in the price of electricity rates have been posing a constant threat to the covers of the city government of Naga. At present, Madam Chair, the city is relying upon electricity alone to sustain energy for its operations backed by generator in cases of power outages. However, coincidentally, consumption rates of both sources are being affected by the emerging crisis, hike in electricity and fuel prices, an ironic picture for the city trying to cut costs on energy consumption. Given the city's current financial standing and the worsening global and local economic crisis that are seemingly here to stay, it is imperative for the city to invest on long-term solutions that will save costs in the long run, one of which is to employ the use of alternative source of energy. In our desire for electric power sufficiency, the sources that shall be developed and utilized are those that are renewable in form so as to conserve and protect our natural resources. Harnessing solar energy through the installation of solar panels, for instance, would be an efficient means for the city to maximize the use of renewable source of energy and save about half on its average monthly electrical consumption. While investing on solar power is costly at the start, Madam Chair, however, its return will be very profitable for the city considering the economic crisis at hand that are apparently not going away too soon, coupled with the predicaments in the climate conditions in the Philippines and the Beakol region in particular, wherein typhoons happen infrequent which distractions cause long periods of power cut and deter many daily on business activities, situations that could be prevented if solar panels would be in place. It is thus imperative for the city to take the lead and serve as an example to the communities of Naga in pursuing its commitment for renewable power source. The energization of City Hall buildings by solar panels as a start is a step towards this. With this, Madam Chair, I am submitting today a proposed ordinance for this purpose.
Amreyna Agapu.
Thank you, Honorable Lito Del Rosario. Anybody else who would like to avail of the privilege time? None, okay, next item.
Reading and approval of the Order of Business.
I move to dispense with the reading of the Order of Business and move for the inclusion of the following items: Under unfinished business, the committee report of the Committee on Transport. Still under unfinished business, the...
Number eleven?
Yes, Madam Chair. Still under unfinished business, the letter coming from the City Legal Office with regards to our query regarding the request of a certain Mr. Bilobiere for refund of defined here paid. Still under unfinished business, Madam Chair, the letter coming from the City Mayor requesting for the passage of an ordinance amending section one of ordinance number twenty-seven dot zero eighty-five regarding the our extrapension case on property, certain property to be used as road right-of-way at the Kalawag San Pilipino Conferenceial, Circle Conferenceial Road. Still under unfinished business, Madam Chair, the letter coming from the City Mayor requesting for amendment of resolution number twenty-two dot six ninety-seven regarding the case for eminent domain of the property of Yopimiasatin in Constancia Quito located at San Pilipino Naga City. Under new business, the subject matter of the privileged speech of the Honorable Billosario. Still under new business, Madam Chair, the endorsement coming from the office of the mayor regarding the request of certain aid actito in Rasili Rosary for the purchase of a road right-of-way at Dimitra property. And last, Madam Chair, is endorsement coming from the office of the mayor requesting for the payment of the retirement of a certain barangay tanud barangay panikwason. With inclusion, Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the Order of Business.
Any second, Honorable Del Rosario.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the intelligence of the committee chair, the committee on rules, I would like to request that the ordinance on fare reduction be included in the report of the Committee on Transport as item eleven B. Eleven B, and that's part of the committee report of the Committee on Transport.
Madam Chair, that's included in the report of the Committee on Transport.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, so motion duly seconded, agenda with the following inclusion is approved. You'd like to acknowledge the presence of Kagawad Bobby, Kalawag, and the other guests who are here. I, Bilen, also Kalawag, and the guests who are here present. Next item.
Order of Business, reading and approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Councilor Del Castillo.
Madam Chair, I move to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the one hundred twenty-seven, one hundred twenty-nine, one hundred thirty-seven, one hundred forty-three, and one hundred forty-fourth regular session of the thirteen Sangguneang Panglunsod and move for its approval.
Any second, I approve.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Five minutes of the previous session. Next item.
Special Business Order, the proposed ordinance reverting the amount of seven hundred thousand pesos from donations as corrected by Honorable Albios. Bisangguneang Panglunsod to AIX under the City Social Welfare and Development Office.
Honorable Albios.
Madam Chair, as discussed during the break last regular session, this ordinance will cater to the needs of our constituents, particularly the burial and medical assistance. So I move for the passage of the ordinance reverting the amount of seven hundred thousand pesos from the donation account of the Sangguneang Panglunsod to AIX under the City Social Welfare and Development Office. So I move, Madam Chair.
Any second, okay, Honorable Salvador Del Castillo.
With regard to this additional appropriation for AIX, recently, the national government granted educational assistance and the amount of one thousand pesos for, I think, elementary, junior high school, senior high school, and the college to a certain limit. I believe that in conjunction with that national initiative, we also include in this reversion the disbursements of SATS assistance to Naga City resident qualified to receive SATS assistance. So that the CSWD will be guided upon in the disbursement of the plan.
So may ceiling na?
Yes.
For educational, legal?
Based on the national grant.
Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo, Honorable Del Rosario.
Yes, Madam Chair, that's a very good, ah, no, ah, ah, the suggestion of the Councilor Attorney Del Castillo but without prejudice to the other scholarship grants that tinatakan city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, motion duly seconded? With observation of the comment of the Ms. Honorable Del Castillo, motion is approved. Next item.
The letter dated August twenty-three, twenty twenty-two of the Honorable City Mayor requesting for authority to negotiate and enter into contract with the Bureau of Fire Protection for the purpose of donating in its favor portions of the properties acquired by the city in barangay Balatas for its use as headquarters.
Anybody who is okay, Honorable Del Castillo?
Properties purchased by the city located at Balatas and the property is intended for the construction of the command center, the central headquarters of the Naga City Police Office, the central headquarters of the Naga City Fire Station, and the Public City Office and other related offices. So, um, this request of the mayor is necessary so that the necessary fund coming from the Bureau of Fire Protection for the construction of their building can now be comment. So with that, Madam Chair, I move that we have passed a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the Bureau of Fire Protection for the purpose of donating certain portion of that city government property located at Balatas.
Any second to the motion? Okay, approved, next item. Subject, yeah, subject ratification, next item.
The proposed resolution, Honorable Linda Gale Abonal Gomez, authored by Honorable Jill Rosales, directing the city, the civil society organization desk officer to issue a notice of call for accreditation to all civil society organizations in the city as compliance with Department of Interior and Local Government Memorandum Circular number twenty-two dot zero eighty-three.
Honorable Gale Abonal Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this is a response to the DILG memorandum circular number twenty-two dash zero eighty-three which provides the guidelines for the accreditation of CSOs and selection of representatives to the local special bodies. If you will recall, Madam Chair, there is an executive order twenty-two one dash zero zero three creating the Naga City CSO desk with a corresponding designation to the CSO desk officer. As an update, Madam Chair, the CSO desk officer has already conducted an inventory and updated the directory of the existing CSOs in Naga City that is still, Madam Chair, required by the DILG memorandum circular. Now, Madam Chair, there is a need for the Sangguneang Panglunsod to issue a call through the CSO desk officer for accreditation again to the CSO. So may I move on joint and collective motion, a resolution directing the CSO desk officer to issue a notice of call for accreditation to all CSOs in Naga City as compliance to the DILG memorandum circular.
On joint and collective motion, approved. Thank you, Honorable Gale Abonal Gomez, next item.
The proposed resolution, Honorable Jesse R. Albios, congratulating and commending Carla Marie A. Orozco of Minds That Matter Tutorial and Learning Center for winning Bronze Award in the twenty-twenty-two Banda International Science.
Honorable Albios.
Honorable. Merit Award in Washiakap twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One, two, three.
In the essence of time and considering that the items number four to nine refers to students of Mindset Matter, may I be allowed with your indulgence to tackle these items simultaneously?
You are allowed.
Yes, last July six twenty-twenty-two, Carla Marie Orozco, grade six pupil of Mindset Matter, garnered a merit award at the Washiakap twenty-twenty-two competition. Also, last June eighteen twenty-twenty-two, students Carla Marie Orozco and Brian Miguel H. Aguirre garnered bronze and certificate awards in the twenty-twenty-two Banda International Science Competition last June eighteen twenty-twenty-two. And in June eighteen twenty-twenty-two, two students of Mindset Matter, Carla Marie Orozco and Ken Cedric Macasinag received silver and bronze awards respectively in the twenty-twenty-two World Math Invitational Preliminary Round. And in the same competition, the final round, Carla Marie Orozco garnered bronze award held last June eighteen in the twenty-twenty-two World Math Invitational. And so with this, Madam Chair, I move for the individual resolution of commendation to these three students of Mindset Matter. So I move, Madam Chair.
Any second, okay, approved, next item.
The proposed resolution, Honorable Jesse R. Albios, commending and congratulating the Naga City Police Office, City Community Affairs Development Unit for being hailed as number one in the unit performance evaluation rating of the Philippine National Police in Beakol Region for the period May twenty-twenty-one to April twenty-twenty-two.
Honorable Albios.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our Naga City Police Office City Community Affairs Development Unit was hailed as number one in the Beakol Region in the unit performance evaluation rating of the Philippine National Police from May twenty-twenty-one to April twenty-twenty-two. This only shows, Madam Chair, that for the entire year covering twelve months, our Naga City Police Office, particularly the City Community Affairs Development Unit, performed very well overall. And so with this recognition, Madam Chair, may I move for a passage of resolution commending and congratulating the Naga City Police Office City Community Affairs Development Unit? So I move, Madam Chair.
Any second, okay, approved, next item.
The proposed resolution of the Honorable Joselito A. Del Rosario, commending certain administrators and faculty members of the University of Santa Isabel for receiving various awards from local, national, and international research conferences.
Where is the proponent? Okay, deferred, next item.
Unfinished business, the report of the Committee on Housing and Settlements.
Committee on Housing and Settlements, Honorable Albios.
Good morning, may I request acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Housing and Settlements?
Your report is acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held last August twenty-four twenty-twenty-two, and there was a quorum. There were six items tackled. The first item is the letter dated April one twenty-twenty-two of Attorney Maccyberg Gerard S. Orbina, City Legal Officer, submitting the status of the negotiation between the city government and the owner of the property at Hinawasan Street, San Francisco, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
The committee resolved to inform its owner, the City Mayor, and punong barangay Francine Napomuseno barangay San Francisco, the city of the updates from the City Legal Office. So I move, Madam Chair.
Any second, approved.
Next item is a board resolution number twenty-two dot zero five of the Naga City Urban Development and Housing Board requesting approval for the transfer and conveyance via sale from registered owners, spouses Tomas and Carmen Torres to their niece Mahogan I. Brenes Constante, a portion of their property situated in Mitra, Penyafrancia, Naga City, which was acquired through the socialized housing program of the city government of Naga. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
Upon the recommendation of the Naga City Urban Development and Housing Board and a motion of Honorable Salvador M. Del Castillo duly seconded by Mr. Danilo Lord of Dese, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglunsod the passage of a resolution approving the transfer and conveyance via sale from registered owners, spouses Tomas and Carmen Torres to their niece Mahogan I. Brenes Constante, a portion of their property situated in Mitra, barangay Penyafrancia, Naga City, which was acquired through the socialized housing program of the city government of Naga. So I move, Madam Chair.
Any second.
Third item, the board resolution number twenty-two dot zero six of the Naga City Urban Development and Housing Board requesting approval for the transfer and conveyance to siblings and co-heirs of Maria Teresa C. Apolinar O'Hara, the respective inherited shares of her siblings, co-heirs of the property located in Mitra, Penyafrancia, Naga City, which was acquired through the socialized housing program of the city government of Naga. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
Upon the recommendation of the Naga City Urban Development and Housing Board and a motion of Honorable Salvador M. Del Castillo duly seconded by Honorable Jill Rosales, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglunsod the passage of a resolution approving the transfer and conveyance to siblings and co-heirs Maria Teresa C. Apolinar O'Hara, the respective inherited shares of her siblings, co-heirs of the property located in Mitra, barangay Penyafrancia, Naga City, originally owned by spouses Bernardo and Salvacion Apolinar, which was acquired through the socialized housing program of the city government of Naga. So I move, Madam Chair.
Any second.
Item number four, undated letter of Angelino Loylo Silios of barangay Santa Cruz, the city, seeking assistance on her problem relative to the house owned by her father acquired to the socialized housing program of the city government of Naga. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
Considering the absence of Ms. Angelino Loylo Silios, the committee resolved to defer consideration of the matter. So I move, Madam Chair.
Any second.
Item number five, letter dated July eighteen twenty-twenty-two of Ms. Rosita B. Patagan of Block Twenty-nine, Lot Fifty-one Urban Poor Housing, Santa Cruz, Naga City, respectfully requesting for amnesty condemnation. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
On motion of Honorable Salvador M. Del Castillo duly seconded by Honorable Jill G. Rosales, the committee resolved to deny the request for amnesty of Ms. Rosita B. Patagan of Block Twenty-nine, Lot Fifty-one, Urban Poor Housing, Santa Cruz, Naga City. So I move, Madam Chair.
Any second.
Number six, proposed resolution authored by Honorable Jesse R. Albios, co-authored by Honorable Jill G. Rosales, Honorable Vidal P. Castillo, Honorable Salvador M. Del Castillo, and Honorable Maria Corazon Penyaflor, creating the technical working group for the formulation of the new urban center development plan and the implementation of the Naga City housing projects for its socialized housing programs and once approved by the city government, monitor the implementation thereof. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
On motion of Honorable Salvador M. Del Castillo duly seconded by Mr. Danilo Lord of Dese, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglunsod the passage of a resolution creating the technical working group for the formulation of the new urban center development plan and the implementation of the Naga City housing projects for its socialized housing program and once approved by the city government, monitor the implementation thereof, subject to the submission of the final copy indicating the functions of the technical working group and the budgetary requirements for its operation. The final copy of the resolution was submitted last Friday and the members of the Sangguneang Panglunsod were furnished the copy yesterday. And so with this, I move for the approval of the resolution, Madam Chair.
Any second. Honorable Del Rosario, comment or objection?
A few comments, Madam Chair.
A few comments, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilor Albios, for this resolution. Think the functions of the technical working group. So, in the structure, Madam Chair, of the functions, distributed function of each individual, of each chair, and of personality of the I observed reading this early morning today, the functions are individually distributed, not by, not the committee, not the TWG function as a whole. For example, the city engineer, we will go to the city engineer. Yeah, city engineer. The city engineer shall administer, coordinate, supervise, and control the construction, maintenance, improvement. This is the regular function of the city engineer. So even without the TWG, this is the job of him. So why still create a TWG? My suggestion, Madam Chair, is to rewrite the function of the TWG as a whole, not as individual offices or representatives. So, Madam Chair, I'm not going to contradict you, because you know who you are. Otherwise, my technical working group, because it is individual distributed work. So, this is what I observed, Madam Chair. Because it is wrong, there is chairman, there is vice chairman. But the functions are distributed to the it should be the function of the TWG as a whole, not the function of individual members of the TWG.
Because they will contribute.
Yes, they will be convening, they will be brainstorming, so they will be brainstorming as a whole.
Deciding as a group.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. If the proponent is amenable to rewrite this and we pass this today in today's session. But in general, Madam Chair, this is a laudable resolution of our Councilor Albios. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario, the proponent. Are you available to the proposal, the comment of the Honorable Del Rosario?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This representation would like to thank the Honorable Del Rosario for the notable observation, and the Chair will incorporate that in the resolution and will submit it in the next regular session for the final approval.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Albios. Next item.
That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Albios. Next item.
The report of the Committee on Appropriations.
Honorable Albios. Honorable Del Castillo.
The Honorable Del Rosario is already around.
Honorable Del Rosario. The previous speech.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is a different subject matter. Numerous names were given to me by our sources, and I consolidated this into one just resolution. For the sake of the matter, but Madam Chair, but what I propose, Madam Chair, is the resolution would be numbered the resolution 101, 10A, 10B, for individual copies. Meanting the following individuals for receiving awards. What Madam Chair, the awards that they receive, the pertinent conference that they attended, and they presented their papers, and the sponsoring agencies. For example, Dr. Hina Valencia, Dr. Chamnong Apinda Service Award, Best Conference Research Paper. Dr. Sherry Belmore, Dr. Chamnong Apinda Service Award, Outstanding School Leader in Higher Education. Ronaldo Bong Arbuhat, MA, Best Paper Award, General Philosophy Category. And with the corresponding conference that they attended, Madam Chair, and the conference that they attended. Mr. Albin P. Aborder, Rodolfo Bueno Jr., finalist for Best Paper Award, Educational Leadership and Management category. Rosalinda P. Obias, MA, finalist for Best Paper Award, Educational Practices category. So, since Madam Chair, the previous resolutions stated they brought honor to the city and this worthy of public emulation and commendation. So, I will return to the title. So with this, Madam Chair, I move on a joint collective motion that we commend the following individuals for receiving various awards from local, national, and international research conferences, namely, Dr. Hina Valencia, Dr. Sherry Belmore, Dr. Cesar San Jose, Ronaldo Bong Buhat, Albin Aborder, Rodolfo Bueno Jr., and Rosalinda P. Obias, all of the Universidad de Santa Isabel, USI in Naga City. I sum up, Madam Chair.
Any second. I would like to acknowledge the presence of the Honorable Mary Kyle Francine Tripulka. Next item.
The report of the Committee on Appropriations.
Honorable Albios.
Madam Chair, may I request for the acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Appropriations?
Your report is acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held last August 26, 2022, and there was no quorum. So, may I request for the conversion of the Sanggungang Panglongson as a committee of the whole?
The Sanggungang is now open to the committee of the whole.
Think back to the I'm not going to say absent.
Del Rosario, see Coach.
Madam Chair, there was only one matter discussed. The first, it was the first endorsement dated August 19, 2022 of its honor, the city mayor endorsing the project proposal of Chair AMI International MGB Incorporated, requesting for funding support relative to the 53rd celebration of Miss Gay B. Colanda 2022, subject for consideration and approval of the Sanggungang Panglongson. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
On motion of Honorable Hill G. Rosales, duly seconded by Honorable Hilda Gail R. Abonal Gomez, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggungang Panglongson the passage of a resolution granting a financial assistance of 10,000 pesos to Chair AMI International MGB Incorporated as funding support relative to the 53rd celebration of the Miss Gay B. Colanda 2022 chargeable against the Penyafrancia Festival donations account. So I move, Madam Chair.
Any second. Okay, comment, Honorable Del Castillo.
As the source of fund, is that Penyafrancia Festival donation account under the general fund or trust fund?
According to our city accountant, this is under the trust fund, Madam Chair. And this was the same source of funding that was given to the Miss Gay B. Colanda in 2019 in the amount of 150,000 pesos.
Just to be sure, Madam Chair, that the source of funds
Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo. So, motion duly seconded, approved.
That ends my report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Albios. Next item.
The report to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development with the attached proposed ordinance of Honorable
Honorable Mary Kyle Francine Tripulka, Chair of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
Of my report? Madam Chair, may I request acknowledgement of the committee report on youth and sports development?
Your report is acknowledged.
We have a quorum, Madam Chair. One item for the committee on youth and sports development, proposed ordinance authored by this representation entitled "An Ordinance Establishing a System for the Annual Interbarangay Sports Fest", with guidelines and penalties and appropriating funds therefore. May I move directly to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
After then, tea and careful deliberation of the matter on motion of Honorable Lucilito Del Rosario, duly seconded by PB Punong barangay J. William Regmalos, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggungang Panglongson to pass an ordinance establishing a system for the annual Interbarangay Sports Fest with guidelines and penalties, creating a trust fund and appropriating funds therefore, incorporating all suggestions and recommendations during the series of committee hearings conducted on the matter.
Any second. Comment from the Honorable Del Castillo?
We will be creating another trust fund. So what will be the source of the trust fund to be created?
The source of the trust fund will be from the penalties. Can we show on screen penalties that will be collected for the violations that will be committed by any offenders from the barangays? Ma'am, can we show on screen the provisions at the section for the penalties? Or the creation of the trust fund?
Just clear to me, Madam Chair. So, who will collect that particular amount? Because if we will be creating a trust fund, it should be deposited with the city treasury.
That's the intention, Madam Chair. It will be collected by the city to be deposited to the trust fund account to be monitored by the city treasurer's office.
Who will collect, the city treasurer or the SK?
The committee, and then to be deposited to the city treasurer's office.
My second theory, Madam Chair, is if we will be creating a trust fund, the purpose of the trust fund should already be spilled out in the ordinance. Because it will not be subjected to future appropriation. If we will be creating a trust fund, the purpose should be specifically cited in the creation. So that all disbursements should be in accordance with that trust which we are creating.
The trust fund, Madam Chair, may only be used for the sports activities of the city, preferably for the Interbarangay also, and subject to the allocation and funding processes, existing allocation and funding processes.
So, with that, Madam Chair, there is no need for the last phrase in the title of the ordinance, that we are still appropriating funds for the purpose.
The author is amenable to the suggestion of Councilor Del Castillo to drop the last phrase in the title of the ordinance, appropriating funds therefore. So, we will stop until the creation of the trust fund. Can we show, ma'am, the title of the ordinance again?
The creation of the trust fund, and also particularly if the trust fund has been held
The title, Madam Chair, will end at
Trust Fund. Appropriating funds therefore.
Yes, that's what I want to be clarified, Madam Chair. From the, as stated by the Honorable Tripulka, from the fines or penalties that will be collected, that amount will be placed into a trust account, trust fund. And as I had mentioned also, the ordinance should spill out what are the uses of the trust fund. So that it will be clear. There is no need for any further appropriation of whatever amount that accrue to the trust fund.
What will be the use of the trust fund? For the
To expedite, Madam Chair, further expenses for the sports fest, the Interbarangay Sports Fest. I am sorry, Madam Chair, I think we still have to retain the title, because there is a separate provision for the funding. We still need funding for the program that will come from the City Sports Development Fund, Chapter 7, ma'am. Separate from the trust fund.
So, Madam Chair, we have certain limitations as far as legislative matters concerned. If we will be passing an ordinance, it should only be for a specific purpose. What will be the purpose of the ordinance? If there is another purpose, it should be contained in another ordinance. Let me allow on the ordinance for different
Okay, the Honorable Kylie?
Yes, Madam Chair.
The suggestion of the Honorable Salvador Del Castillo, the creation, and then the other the other
The creation, Madam Chair, of the trust fund is a separate ordinance,
Separate ordinance. It is the funding for the funding for the Okay, Honorable Del Rosario.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a matter of fact, I pointed out during the committee hearing, the trust fund, the actual suggestion of Councilor Del Castillo is to change the title, to change the ordinance, creating a trust fund for the purpose, so that it will be valid. I suggested that, I also observed that during the deliberation in the committee, the trust fund, because if it is valid in the body of the ordinance, then May is the title, that's violation of the due process. So, giving due information. I think, Madam Chair, Chairman Kylie to include that. So I think that's amendment to the title. Ah?
Included for the title. Included for the title.
So I think if that's already included in the title, that would, I think that would or another ordinance.
What I think, Madam Chair, is that
Different creation.
An ordinance should only be for a specific purpose. If the purpose is not
Specific.
Subsumed under that title, it should be in another ordinance.
But, Madam Chair, this is subsumed in the ordinance itself. It's included in the title, and there is a provision discussing the trust fund. So, you know, funding for this program shall complement the city sports, a contingency fund as part of the source for the file that you will sign your trust.
It will not be coming It will not be coming from the trust fund. Because of the trust fund, it will not collect
But, Madam Chair, if that would satisfy Councilor Del Castillo
It will not be sports activities. Right? In the trust fund, you will not be able to demand use for sports activities. It is another source, it is said another funding, 50,000. Same for sports activities.
So, it would be better, Madam Chair, if the ordinance should first appropriate a certain amount, then later, whatever is being collected, should be placed in a trust fund. But not I don't understand, I don't understand.
Madam Chair?
Okay, Honorable Tripulka.
If we cannot pass an ordinance creating a trust fund and appropriating a fund If we cannot pass an ordinance, creating a trust fund and appropriating a fund for the similar purpose, then I will file nalampu, ano, a separate one. A separate ordinance for the creation of the trust fund. And first, I will ask to pass muna po the establishment of the system and then the appropriation for the funds for the annual Interbarangay Sports Fest.
Can we defer this first and then you make the necessary corrections and then you pass that to ordinance the next session?
In the next session, Madam Chair.
So we refer this back to your committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Kylie Tripulka. Honorable Perez?
Thank you po. Suggestion. I'm really having a hard time reading the salient points of the proposed ordinance because of the ink used sa kuyan. May ako nababasa dyan despite my eyeglasses. So may I suggest that next time, we should print all, ano, itong readable black ink, kanganipong malinaw para makabali man kami sa discussion, those with poor eyesight, no? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Perez. Honorable Rosales?
Since this ordinance, Madam Chair, is being presented in its second meeting, our rules provide that the proponent should present these salient points during her committee report. So perhaps in the next session, the proponent would discuss to the lineary the important provisions of this, her proposed ordinance. I will help the Councilor Tripulka in drafting.
Thank you, Honorable Rosales, Honorable Kylie. The Honorable Rosales is voluntarily.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is going to be doing to help you with the ordinance?
I will prepare the two separate ordinances, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Kylie Tripulka. Next item?
The Report of the Committee on Culture and the Arts.
Culture and Arts, Honorable Perez?
Good morning. May I request acknowledgement of the following report of the Committee on Culture and the Arts?
Your report is acknowledged.
The meeting was held last August twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, and there was no quorum. So the body proceeded to deliberate on the matters referred to it for appropriate action and such be later elevated to this honorable body as a committee of the whole.
The angunahan is now convened as a committee of the whole.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Now we go to the first business of the day. Proposed resolution authored by Honorable Salvador Del Castillo entitled Resolution Requesting the National Historical Commission of the Philippines to Correct the Inscription on the Monument of the Fifteen Beagle Martyrs Located at Plaza Quince de Marte, City of Naga Based on Historical Records. This is the second hearing of the proposed resolution and like the first meeting, there were revealing discussions about the matter and it was later admitted that the committee would need the historian to contribute his opinion on the subject matter. Because unfortunately, for second committee hearings, the subject historians whom we invited failed to attend such meeting for unknown reason. Hence, there was a suggestion that the chairman would go to personally, would reach out to Mr. Danny Herona so that we can be assured of his presence in the next session, in the next committee hearing, which I did, but unfortunately, mayos siya sa harong nya, so I had to make another attempt to personally come to him and discuss about our request that he be present in the next meeting. Anyway, may I go to directly to the disposition on this matter? On motion of Honorable Mary Kyle Francine Tripulka, seconded by Honorable Melvin Ramon G. Buenafe, the committee resolved to defer action on the matter, set another committee hearing and invite again Professor Danilo M. Herona and other local historians to the said meeting. So move, Madam Chair?
Any second?
Now the second resolution. Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Two-Dash-Seventeen of Barangay Kararayan, Naga City entitled Resolution Naming Certain Streets in Zones One, Two, Three, and Four of Barangay Kararayan, Naga City that have remained unnamed up to this time in accordance with the rules and guidelines set forth by the National Historical Institute of the Philippines. Now, this time, this is the second hearing on the same matter and this time, Barangay Captain Agrevante was present. But there was an inquiry as to what happened to the first resolution submitted to us because what we had on hand was a new resolution different from the first. So it was suggested that a new amended resolution should be submitted to us before any action could be given by the committee. And so may I go to the disposition on the matter, Madam Chair? On motion of Honorable Melvin Ramon Buenafe, seconded by Honorable Mary Kyle Francine Tripulka, the committee resolved to return the matter to the Sangguni Ampalusod, Barangay Kararayan. That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Perez. Next item? Honorable Del Castillo?
Before we further proceed, Madam Chair, we are in receipt of a letter from the ESO endorsed by the mayor with annotation as urgent. So with that, Madam Chair, I move that we reconsider our calendar of business for today and to include this matter under SBO. And in connection with this, Madam Chair, may we invite the city budget officer, the city accountant, and the city accountant during the deliberation of this matter. But first, Madam Chair, I move that we include this under special business order since the matter is certified by the mayor as urgent.
Any second for the inclusion?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we invite the city budget officer and city accountant.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Pero we proceed to the next item while waiting for the presence of the two persons at two department heads. Next item?
The Report of the Committee on Health and Nutrition with the proposed ordinance of Honorable.
Honorable Raniola, Chair of the Committee on Health and Nutrition.
Request for the acknowledgement of this report.
Your report is acknowledged.
This was convened on August twenty-five, two thousand twenty-two with quorum. Business for the day, proposed ordinance authored by this representation and City Youth Counselor Maria Dizanel Buena granting a free executive checkup once a year in the City of Naga, in the Naga City Hospital all active and in-service members of the barangay health workers, barangay nutrition scholars, barangay service point officers, and the community-based rehabilitation service officers. May I go directly to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
On motion of Honorable, seconded by Hillda, yeah, the Brunnadi Committee resolved to recommend to Sangguni Ampalusod to pass an ordinance authored by this representation granting a free basic executive checkup once a year in the Naga City Hospital and members of, for the members of the barangay health workers, the barangay service point officer, community-based rehabilitation specialist, and twenty-seven barangay of Naga City. And the funding, of course, will come from the different offices which they belong. I so move, Madam Chair?
Any second, approve.
That ends my report, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Raniola. Next item?
The Report of the Committee on Agriculture?
Honorable Melvin Ramon Buenafe, Chair of the Committee on Agriculture.
Good morning. This is the Report of the Committee on Agriculture. I request acknowledgement, Madam Chair.
Your report is acknowledged.
The committee hearing was conducted on August twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two at about one PM and there was a quorum. There was only one item taken in the business for the day and we tackled the letter of Mr. Frank Mendoza, Acting City Agriculturalist, requesting for the passage of a resolution addressed to the Philippine Center for Post-Harvest Development and Mechanization. This is through the Rice Competitiveness Enhancement Fund Mechanization Component for the grant of post-harvest equipment. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
On motion of Honorable Salvador M. Del Castillo, seconded by Honorable Antonio Beltran and Miss Lisa Mapa, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguni Ampalusod to pass a resolution requesting assistance from the Philippine Center for Post-Harvest Development and Mechanization or PhilMac through the Rice Competitiveness Enhancement Fund Mechanization Component for the grant of two sets of mechanical pallet dryers and rice meal. And I so move, Madam Chair?
Any second, okay, approve.
That ends my report, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Buenafe. Next item?
The Report of the Committee on Land Use?
Honorable Del Castillo, Chair of the Committee on Land Use, is acknowledged.
Madam Chair, I move for the acknowledgement of the report.
Your report is acknowledged.
Madam Chair, this is the report of the committee for the public hearing held on August thirty-one at Barangay Kararayan with regard to the application for resoning and the property and the reclassification of properties located in that barangay. So may I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
Since the affected residents and adjacent property owners are not present, the committee suggested to reset this on September twelve at two o'clock in the afternoon to be held at the basketball court of Situlangun, Kararayan, this city. The CPO is here by task to assist, arrange the place where the public hearing will be conducted by providing the tarpaulin, the tent, tables and chairs in coast wider dissemination of the scheduled public hearing with an estimated attendance of fifty persons, more or less. So with that, Madam Chair, I move that aside from the CPO, we task our secretariat to post the sending of notices with the help of the barangay council of Kararayan so that we will be mastering enough attendance for this purpose on September twelve at two o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Madam Chair?
Any second, okay, approve.
Anisnak? Bahala ng committee kayan na.
Bahala ng committee chief.
Thank you. That ends my report, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo. Next item?
Letter dated August twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, about thirty, MacGyver Gerard S. Orbina, City Legal Officer, requesting for clarification on what specific question or issue in relation to the letter of the CPDO pertaining to the application of McDonald's conception for resoning, does the Sangguni Ampalusod wish to answer or address in seeking for legal opinion?
Sa in committee ni Pigrive, Honorable Del Castillo?
This subject matter, Madam Chair, can we request our secretary to read this subject matter?
McDonald's conception?
Itong McDonald's.
Actually, Madam Chair, for the information of the body, that building along Concepcion Pakenya, the Maharlika Concepcion Pakenya in front of the Holy Rosary Major Seminary was constructed without securing first a resoning of the property on which the building was constructed. Based on information given by the City Planning and Development Office, they were given time to comply with all the requirements, but apparently, the applicant had not complied with what was required under our existing ordinances. So our query with the legal office is, what are the actions that the city should take against the applicant for constructing a building without first securing a resoning or the changing of the zoning classification of the property on which the building was constructed? And second, query, Madam Chair, whether we can declare such building as a nuisance so that the appropriate provisions of the Civil Code of the Philippines can be available by the City Government of Naga?
Was that clear in the letter to the city legal officer?
It's that clear, Madam Chair. So with this, I'm clarifying what the purpose of the letter being sent to the legal officer.
So can we return this back to the city legal officer with the issues you raised regarding to the two questions, the query you would like to be answered by the city legal officer?
Because it is the Committee on Land Use who requested that it be referred to the city legal officer for legal, for guidance as to what action the city could take on the matter.
Okay, the city secretary is so instructed to return this matter to the city legal officer with the clear definition of what the body is asking for legal opinion? Number one, one actions for noncompliance, yes?
That you want to be guided upon.
For noncompliance of the conversion and second, as a nuisance.
Complying with the zoning ordinance of the city and second, whether we can declare that building as a nuisance and the city could avail of the provisions of the Civil Code of the Philippines on the matter.
So stated. Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo. The secretary is so instructed. The city budget officer and the city acting city accountant is around. Can we go back to ano item to?
The additional matter under SBO, the letter dated September six, twenty-twenty-two.
Yes, the inclusion.
ESO?
What was the inclusion?
To charge to its current budget year, one million four hundred fifty thousand pesos from MOE of the ESO, unappropriated balance to fund the payment for the request of Camarini's National High School Yearbook twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty.
Rules are suspended? The, kailan sa the city accountant or the city budget officer? Ano, ano? Ayun na, ayun na yan. It's already flash in the, uli ko si Honorable Perez lang dahi nakakabasa. Emareto, senyor na, ikahubis. Okay, Honorable Del Castillo.
Yeah, city accountant will be guided. Um, I will shoot first, uh, my, my query on the matter. First, um, we want to be clarified as to the source of the 1,450,000 pesos. Because the, the purpose apparently for the payment of the, uh, yearbook of the Camarinisor National High School for the year 2019 and 2020. So, um, may nakabugta kayan, Madam Chair, na, uh, from other maintenance and operating expenses MOE of the education, scholarship, in sports office, parentheses, ESO, then unappropriated balance. So sa'in baga talaga hali and kundo, ano 1.450 million pesos. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mendoza?
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair and Honorable Sanggunehan. Uh, I would say that I am as perplexed as the good city councillor Del Castillo as to the intent of the letter. Ang signatory po kayan is, uh, ESO. Dayman nag-agi samuya, pero I understand kaya may mga gastuang ESO na naicharge sa SAF na dapat ilipat sa general fund, baka iyon na po iniyo.
Yearbook, nakakaagbagalig eh, high yearbook 2019.
Yearbook. Uh, pero kapag as for that, medyo baka kay po i-revise nalang kung ano si gusto talaga sabihin kang ESO. Di po nag-agi samuya yan.
Geron nahili ko kasi bago si in charge, si Pin, ay si, Mr. Aguilar ba'to? Si in charge kang ESO, karuyaong kasi bago nagali na. Okay, Honorable Del Castillo.
So, uh, with that, Madam Chair, can we defer temporarily the matter in wait for Mr.?
Aguilar.
Aguilar. Ah, tamas kasi budget officer baladay man.
Siang in charge kang ESO manyan.
They are not suggest kaya, Madam Chair, si Mr. Aguilar naputundas si Mr. Mendoza. So, di mo pala na arm ni Mr. Mendoza.
So we defer this temporarily?
We defer temporarily, Madam Chair.
Next item. Number nine.
The letter dated August 26, 2022, of Mr. Willie Priles of the City Planning, submitting the updated proposed transport scheme for the city.
Committee on Transport.
The endorsement dated August 24, 2022, of Honorable City Mayor, Orwadin Demowa, entered into by between the city and the Central Vehicle State University of Agriculture on internship program of veterinary medicine students of the former for ratification.
Chair of the Committee on Agriculture. Mowa. Mowa po.
Uh, Madam Chair, the memorandum agreement draft has been, uh, submitted but not yet finalized. It was subject to some, uh,
Ratification.
modifications and, uh, it has just been emailed by the opponent. So we request that be, this be deferred, uh, to this is, uh,
Was it already signed?
Uh, yes, si bago. Wait, uh, with this, uh, revised memorandum agreement, uh, draft, and it was already signed, so, Madam Chair, I move that, uh, this memorandum agreement be ratified by the Sanggunehan Panglonsod and I so move, Madam Chair.
Any second, I approve.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Benefei, next item.
The report of the Committee on Transport.
Committee on Transport. This is my, uh, Honorable Benefei.
This is the report of the Committee on Transport, uh, may I request acknowledgement, Madam Chair?
Your report is acknowledged.
The committee hearing was conducted last, uh, September 1, and there was, uh, quorum, it was, uh, convened at, uh, about 1:00 PM. There were eight items taken up on the business for the day, and, uh, may I, uh, lump the first three items as they are related? Item number one, the letter dated August 11, 2022 of Ms. Anna Mae El Corneo of Barangay Santa Cruz, D City, applying for E-trike franchise. Item number two, undated letter of Mr. Rudy Del Yoro Obsuna of Barangay Sabang, D City, applying for Trimobile franchise. And item number three, undated letter of Mr. Rodel M. San Jose of Barangay Mabolo, D City, applying for E-trike franchise. And, uh, said items one, two, and three were treated simultaneously. And may I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
Pending review and declaration of the forfeited or canceled Trimobile franchise based on the list submitted by the Trimobile Task Force. Mga franchisee na hindi na nagre renew as far back, yung iba as far back as, uh, 2012. On motion of Honorable Salvador Del Castillo, seconded by Honorable Jesse Albios and Mr. Domingo Porlay, the NCPC representative, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunehan Panglonsod to defer the items number one, two, and three as, uh, mentioned, pending cancellation and availability of Trimobile franchise, and I so move, Madam Chair?
Any second.
Item number four, undated letter of Mr. Elias San Jose of Barangay Pacol, applying for special Trimobile franchise, applying Barangay Pacol. Item number five, letter dated May 12, 2022 of Ms. Karen Silot of, uh, Concello Heights Subdivision, Naga City, applying for Trimobile franchise. And these items four and five were also treated simultaneously. And may I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
Both the application of Mr. Elias San Jose and Ms. Karen Silot cannot be after the pan for the committee hearings, uh, committee, for the day of the committee hearing pending cancellation and availability of Trimobile franchise. Hence, the chair advised applicants to give their contact numbers so that the Trimobile Task Force in case there will be available franchise in the future and they will be appropriately notified. On motion of Honorable Salvador Del Castillo, seconded by Honorable Jesse Albios and Mr. Domingo Porlay, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunehan Panglonsod to defer the matter pending cancellation and availability of Trimobile franchise. And I so move, Madam Chair? Item number six, letter of Mr. Anthony D. Metas, Vice President of Vistanza Tri-Cycle Operators and Drivers Association, submitting the list of applicants for Trimobile franchise at Deca Homes Vistanza Subdivision, Pacol, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair? On motion of Honorable Salvador Del Castillo, seconded by Honorable Jesse Albios and Mr. Domingo Porlay, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunehan Panglonsod to defer approval of the application pending compliance of all requirements. Furthermore, they were instructed to secure the barangay endorsement for their applications, particularly from barangays Pacol and Karayaan, and I so move, Madam Chair?
Any second.
Item number seven, letter dated August 9, 2022.
Before that, Honorable Benefei, I was informed by Mr. the Vice President na garo dahi, dahi nagtugot ang barangay captain kang Pacol, ang Karayaan man naghahagad ng limang slots from Karayaan mangdaan, na dahi kabali kang members nindan. Geru yan po si, si, uh, information na, na pinaabot sa kuya kainiyo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, for the information of the body. My, uh, office also received the letter endorsement from the punong barangay of Karayaan endorsing, uh, a certain number of franchises application with this name included
Oo, naggaro na.
For that route. So, so far, may ipapokaming na receive na endorsement man hali sa barangay Pacol.
Geru iyan ang may problema.
Thank you for the information, Madam Chair. For item number seven, letter, we tackled letter dated August 9, 2022 from the Trimobile Task Force submitting report containing the list of regular and special Trimobile for hire operators which as of August 9, 2022 have failed to renew their respective franchises. And, uh, may I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
On motion of Honorable Del Castillo, duly seconded, the committee resolved to take note of the matter and to schedule a meeting for the same with a committee for the review and validation of the list submitted by the Trimobile Task Force for further action, and I so move, Madam Chair?
Any second, I approve, next item.
Finally, item number eight, proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Joselito S. A. Del Rosario entitled, "An Ordinance Prescribing New Fares for Public Utility Vehicles in Naga City", revising City Ordinance Number 2020-113 and for other purposes. And, uh, may I mention some of the highlights of this proposed ordinance? Letter A, regular Trimobile franchise will now have four passengers authorized capacity. Letter B, special Trimobile franchise authorized is for passengers for E-trike, four passengers, for taxical, four passengers, and for the pajaks. Two passengers are now authorized. The new fares for Trimobiles, taxicals, E-trikes, and special franchises will be 13 pesos per passenger and 10 pesos per passenger for pajak. May I proceed to the disposition?
You may proceed.
On motion of Honorable Joselito Del Rosario, seconded by Honorable Jesse Albios and Mr. Domingo Porlay, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunehan Panglonsod to pass an ordinance prescribing new fares for public utility vehicles in Naga City, revising City Ordinance Number 2022-113 and for other purposes. Furthermore, also adding another provision to that, uh, proposed ordinance that only one back ride, this is, uh, the passenger behind the driver will be allowed, and, uh, I so move, Madam Chair?
Any second, I approve.
Thank you.
Honorable Del Rosario, are you raising your hand?
Thank you, Madam Chair, the final form of the ordinance for purposes of, uh, uh, further related in this, uh, body, may present, Madam Chair, the final form of the ordinance as, uh, presented by, uh, um, ipaki baba doon sa, sa, yan. Uh, earlier, Madam Chair, before the session starts, yung tinatanong ko ni Councillor Del Castillo about yung provision on one passenger sa back ride ng, uh, kung naibugtako, I, I assure Councillor Del Castillo and even Councillor Albius that, uh, it's part of the final form. Uh, section one, yung second paragraph, for purposes of subsections A to D hereof, the passenger to be seated next or at the back of the driver shall be limited to one passenger only for safety purposes. So ipo yan, Madam Chair, kaysa agreement na sa committee headed by Councillor, uh, uh, Benefei. So nakabugtak po sa dyan, Madam Chair. Now, Madam Chair, this ordinance also, uh, proposes a very clear, uh, discount rate ipaki bugtak naman ipaki baba sa discounts, yan. Um, yung discounts, Madam Chair, section two, C, yung discount will be, uh, 11 pesos yung sa, uh, tricycle, E-trike, uh, axicle, and, uh, regular trip. So, so yung pamasahe is, we will be reducing that to 13 pesos from 15 pesos original na pamasahe. Then yung discount, instead of 10 pesos, Madam Chair, we peg it at 11 pesos. So, iyan ang, kasi ang pagpi compute mo, Madam Chair, itong 20% that's, uh, uh, karo naglaaog 2 pesos and, uh, may butalik, kaya nag, kung ira round up po, garo 10 pesos, medyo alanganin sa Madam Chair. Kaya this ordinance specifically pegs it at 11 pesos. So if the, uh, full chamber will agree, para may pung kurulitan, Madam Chair, uh, General Omar, may kurulitan ang pasayron na, ang discount baga nga'y is 2 pesos and, uh, arugani, difisil pagkuruli. So specific na dyan, Madam Chair, yung discount of 20% will be 11 pesos. So yun, para may pung problema sa implementation, Madam Chair. So those will enjoy this, Madam Chair, are PWD students, senior citizens, and yung solo parents. So iyan, Madam Chair, ang silent features of the.
Question?
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario, Honorable Perez.
Um, two questions. First, itong sa ano, itong sa back ride, kabali na yan, dumaan sa four passengers? Itong back ride, Madam Chair? So dapat tululang dumaan sa lao?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Main body kang tricycle, tricycle?
Tulos sa lao, saro sa likod.
Saro sa likod.
Minsan po kaya trimobile daw niyan, Madam Chair, is sa duwang nasa likod. Minsan ang driver halos sa, biga para ulit-ulit yan ni Councillor Del Castillo, eh. Ang driver halos siya una sa salbing kang tricycle. Kaya for safety reasons, ipo yan ang nakabugtak sa second, uh, phrase kang, uh, second, uh, uh, sentence kang, uh, section one, Madam Chair?
Okay, second question, itong piground off na discount, na 20% discount, is that, is that allowed by law? Na i, na itong 20%, bako sigsak amount, kundi i, ipi peg dido ito into round, rounded off? Gusto ko lang maclarify kung if that is allowed by law because ang yaong sa law, klarado 20%. So, ano yan, uh, I'm not a lawyer, but I would like to know if that is, uh, allowed by law na magsadiri kitang computation kan 20%? Although I understand, uh, ang purpose is for convenience and naturally, arumantala kaya nangyari, but still, this is, this is an ordinance. This is, we're making, uh, a law out of, uh, a bigger, of a national law. So that question should be answered kung. So that question should be answered kung is that allowed or is that legal?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a lawyer among our colleagues. Can he answer that for us?
The lawyer in the house? There are two lawyers?
Sige, I defer. Then after that, I will defer my...
Okay, the lawyer.
Ah, we have two lawyers.
Two lawyers, ang anuta.
Yes, I'm sorry. Painoodan na si... Mas malay man grary malinaw, ano. Ako man pati ma-take, man ako ng law.
Attorney Rosales. Thank you, Attorney. Thank you, Attorney Rosales. Attorney Del Castillo, the young one and the young ones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I recite the principle. A local ordinance cannot amend a national law. And therefore, we cannot change the 20% to less than 20%. We cannot. We cannot make it 15, 18, or whatever. It should be 20%.
Pero pa-practical reasons kaya.
Yes.
Dahi namang pati mauruli 'yan in 15's and tabos, may lamang 15's.
But the question is legal. Can we make or pass an ordinance which is in contradiction with a national law? And the answer is no. We should follow the spirit of the law, the national law. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. To differing opinions, Honorable Del Rosario, Honorable Attorney.
Madam Chair, this is not so legal opinion, but I believe we can modify the paragraph into stating that the 20% discount will still be considered without stating the actual amount. Kasi ang nangyayari man, Madam Chair, sa ground is that really the pajak drivers are also rounding it off and the passengers are also rounding it off to include their tip. Kaya nangyayari with two considerations, nagkakasundo 'yung mga passengers. So in effect, we will not be violating the national law. However, we can still consider the discounts that are actually provided to the rightful passengers, Madam Chair.
Okay, Honorable Del Rosario.
So with this, Madam Chair, I amend the sentence to read now as follows. The 20% discount, discounted rate will still be in effect period. Then 'yung last sentence will be added. We will be removing 11 pesos, then 'yung sa pajak. So 'yung first phrase ng... First paragraph will be retained, will remove the amount, including 'yung wardings ng exact figures, we remove that, and 'yung sa pajak will remove that. Then we will retain 'yung last paragraph. Okay?
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario.
I defer to the wisdom of... Minsan kaya talaga pag medyo maidad ka na, magayon ang mga wisdom mo talagang... Kaya minsan talagang...
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario, Honorable Benapi.
Along this line, Madam Chair, I will be meeting with the transport groups as the chairman of the committee in transport and explain to them the idea behind this. And I believe they are very amenable since sitting with us during the committee hearing is no less than the piston president also as NCPC representative, Mr. Porlaye. And during the committee meeting also, there was the presence of a number of officers of the different so that or tricycle operators and the drivers associations. And they were all amenable to the new proposed ordinance.
Madam Chair, last na po.
Honorable Del Rosario.
Um, ang purpose kaya Madam Chair kang presentation as the author. Gusto ko kaya 'yung malinaw sa part kang driver, sa kasi pasayro. Secondly, as Sangguniya, we have the plenary powers naman to enact ordinances for the common good to avoid discussion sa part kang si mga pasayro, sa kasi mga driver. Ay, 'yung niya na puntumin ni Councilora Rosales. But we subscribe to the... Kasi during the committee hearing naman na Madam Chair, itong representative can transport na intindihan man in the scene. So with this, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the ordinance fixing the... Tintin, ipaki ano 'yung title, tin. Tin, 'yung exact title. An ordinance, I move, Madam Chair, that we approve the ordinance prescribing the reduction of fares for public utility vehicles in Naga City, revising City Ordinance Number 22, 2020, 113, and for other purposes as amended. On third and final reading, Madam Chair.
Any second, okay, approve.
Thank you.
Do you want to take the break? Mr. Aguilar is already around. Break. Okay, we take a break.